Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and get started a little bit early because we've got a report out. We are returning from closed session. We have nothing to report. For those of you that are not aware, we lost one of our firefighters in an automobile accident going home. Captain Stacy Hamilton from the Columbia Air Attack Base. So, I would ask everyone to observe a moment of silence for Captain Hamilton. Thank you very much. And with that, I would ask the clerk of the board to read our six o'clock appointment.
This is presentation of the First Responders and Emergency Medical Services Study and Consideration of Providing Staff Direction on the Next Steps Regarding Fire Service Delivery and Sustainability in the County.
Staff report.
Good evening. Maureen Frank, Deputy County Administrator, County Administrator's Office. We're here today to give a report out on the First Responder and EMS Study Presentation. This is not an easy subject. This is something that is critical and vital to our community. It's a report that really needed to happen, and we're glad today to run through the report. What I will do is briefly go through the outline of the report. We'll talk about why we started this study, what was studied, and the recommendations that were made by the Matrix Group who was hired to conduct this study. As you know, county staff likes to start off and talk about any projects that we're doing and relate it back to the vision and mission that we have in this county. So, to remind everyone, the vision for Toowalomee County is a place where all citizens enjoy opportunities to thrive in a safe, healthy, and productive community. Our mission is to provide exceptional services that create a healthy and safe community, exercise natural, cultural, and financial resource stewardships, and promote economic prosperity and enhanced quality of life. And I can't think of anything else but this topic really addressing everything that we want to accomplish as far as our vision and mission. With that, I'll start off with an overview of where we were and how we got to the point of conducting this study. As we saw back in 2013 with the RIM fire, or any day-to-day fire that we experience in this county, the protection of life and property is a critical mission in which our fire agencies in this community take very, very seriously. They're extremely passionate about it, and they go about it day-to-day in trying to protect all of us in our community. There is no one fire agency that can handle a large emergency by themselves. We're very, very independent, all of the districts, the city, the Miwok Band of Indians, and the county. In 2010, 2012, as your board is aware, Craig Pedro, the county administrator, and myself conducted in-house studies on fire services. And we were working, we worked with the fire chiefs in trying to develop a plan to strengthen the county's fire department, and again, at that time, talked about sustainability. Because at that time, we could see that the budgets were getting stretched to the max, that we weren't keeping up with needed equipment and resources, and what can we do? Again, the objectives of those two studies were to really maximize fire and first responder coverage and response for the citizens of this community, maximize efficiencies for all of the first responder equipment that was rolling onto various scenes or emergencies, and then, again, look at long-term financial stability of the system, and then explore various service delivery options. What came out of that study were several items. First, we were able to establish a real definitive listing of all of the fire engines and first responders in the system, and that included a listing of staffing, equipment, and facilities. We then really looked at our volunteer system. You know, when I first came to the county 24 years ago, we were teetering for just county fire alone, almost 200 volunteers. And when we started the study in 2010, we were looking close to around 36, 40 volunteers. And so, it's really been a struggle. So, we really wanted to revitalize that. We got some recruitment and retention grant, and we really, the last couple of years, have really tried to focus and work on that, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. We signed new auto aid agreements for most agencies. We have one remaining agency, and that's with the Miwok Tribe, and we're this close. So, we expect that any month now, as far as getting that signed in front of your board for your approval. We also made revisions to the CAL FIRE CAD system regarding resources and making sure that we were calling in the closest resource to respond to an incident, and that we weren't trying to respond to something that, in which we crossed another district that was truly the closest fire engine going to that incident. The positive change that came out of these in-house studies were great, but we really needed to have someone come in that was independent from the county administration and really look at fire and first responder services and come and provide a long-term financial plan for us. What is the best way to provide fire service? How should we go about that, and what should we be looking at? So, in December 2016, a request for proposal was sent out. We received four proposals. We conducted interviews of the firms that submitted proposals to us. We asked for work from them, samples that best reflected what we were asking for in our scope of work, and the Matrix Group was later hired to conduct the study. We also then created a core study team to work on this study, all the way from the beginning to the end. And the core group consisted of all of the fire chiefs, the sheriff's office, EMS staff, and then myself as kind of the, I was gonna say ringleader coordinator for this project. We met for over two and a half years, and we had the Matrix Group meet with each of the fire districts or agencies on their own, and then meet with agency officials, and then we also met, I believe, five times with the core study team. In the back of your board memo, I've included a list of everyone that the Matrix Group interviewed. The first part of the study for the Matrix Group was really to look at general information about each and every district. So, like I just mentioned, each agency, they met with each agency, collected data, they formatted, they analyzed it, and they sent it back to those fire districts, had them proof it and read it. It went back to Matrix. Matrix made the changes, and then it was sent back out again for review before it was finalized. The biggest, most important component, as we were just talking about a little while ago, was the second phase of the study. And the second phase was really to look at and examine the following things that you see. We wanted them to look at the agency's financial resources and the sustainability of each of those agencies. We wanted to look, then, at the fire department's operation individually and as a whole. How are we operating in Toowalomee County? What's going on? Could we deliver the service in a different or better way? Training. What are we doing with training, and are there opportunities that we're missing as far as training, and what can we do in that respect? Then there was the fire service delivery options. What can we do as far as delivering the services, and what models should, what are the pros and cons of each of those models, and what should we look at to further look at or to further enter into or try to go down that path of implementing? And the same was true with ambulance. They looked at ambulance's services. So, they looked at the ambulance fleet, they looked at their stations, they looked at their operating, they looked at their financial sustainability, and gave us recommendations on the EMS system. Then they also looked at emergency communications, and in regards to that, there was two components in regards to that subject matter. One was the implementation of emergency medical dispatch, or EMD as we know it, and gave us recommendations on that implementation. And the second item, as far as emergency communications, at one time, we were looking at a co-located dispatch, meaning every dispatch agency in our county, the CAL FIRE was, still owns their old headquarters, excuse me, on Forest Road, and they were looking at potentially moving their operations from Calaveras over to Toowalomee. And if we were to do that, is there some way we can take some efficiencies and co-locate all of the dispatch agencies in the county? So, that was one of the items that we asked Matrix to look at, as far as, did they see any pitfalls, did they see any advantages, and what was going on with that? So, as far as the first subject matter, and what I did in this presentation, in the PowerPoint presentation, and both the board item that was written for the board and for the public is, the Matrix study is 200-plus pages, and what I tried to do is synthesize out all of the information and outline it, both in the memo and in your PowerPoint presentation that you're seeing today. So, the first category, the first area was agency financial resources and their sustainability. And the trends that the Matrix Group found was as follows. Over the following years, we had just talked about it, there was reduced number of volunteers, and so, the fire departments are, for a variety of reasons, and so, the fire departments are relying more and more on paid staff. We have an aging fire equipment fleet out there across the board, and replacement costs for that equipment continually go up. They range anywhere from $300,000 to $750,000 per vehicle. With the recession that hit all of us in 2009, combined with other years of declining or best stagnant property values, this has resulted in lost revenue for many of the fire districts in our county. And over a four-year period from fiscal year 1314 to 1718, the operating expenditures countywide for fire have increased an average of 4.3 annually. One thing I should mention as we go through the statistics and some of the references in this report that Matrix did, their report was a snapshot in time. It didn't change over the lifetime of the report. So, even the report is just issued in 2019. You'll see throughout the document, there are references back to fiscal year 18. They also did not take into account any future proposed development that would then have impacts on our community. Again, it was just a snapshot in time. So, continuing on with the financial resources and sustainability, the Matrix Group also talked about various different mechanisms in which we could look at as far as providing some support to our fire districts. The funding mechanisms that they did explore was Prop 172. As you know, right now, county fire is the only fire agency that receives 172. This money comes into the county and is dispersed by resolution to various county departments, the sheriff's office, the DA, probation, a little bit to animal control, and county There was extensive talk among the core study group is, well, can't we look at that? Can't we open that up? Can't that be offered to other fire districts? And one of the things explained to them is, yep, that's an option that the board supervisor has, but you need to realize in doing that, then you are making other county departments who rely on this money, you know, suffer. They won't have as much revenue for that. It's not an endless pot of money. We also talked about an increase in the transcendent occupancy tax, excuse me, as we know it as TOT. We talked about a benefit assessment. And then, something that Matrix didn't talk about, but we've talked about as far as in the core team, is then a parcel fee as probable options to help bridge that gap and to help look at making the county, excuse me, the fire departments and agencies in the county more sustainable. At the end of this section, the Matrix Group recommended that each of the fire districts and departments will need to evaluate their financial resources to match their revenues with expenditures for full operational needs. So, the Matrix Group really did not do us any favors. They did not say, "Go after this." They really said that each district needs to look at what their needs are, what money they need to be sustainable, and should come up with their own funding plans. Then, the Matrix Group was also asked to evaluate and analyze the operations of the fire suppression and emergency medical services in the county. And with that, they looked at CAD data, and in 2016, again, snapshot in time, the following emergency calls were received and responded to. For fire calls, there were 5,964. For EMS calls, and it's broken up into two categories, there was a total for emergency calls, there were 6,282, and non-emergency was 1,598. When analyzing this data, we as a core study team had disagreements with the Matrix Group, and just putting it out there so you can understand where the core study group was coming from. Some of the districts disagreed with the number of emergency calls responded to and the information that was given out of the CAD data. So, some of the districts, they keep their own logs of what they respond to and what they go out as far as responding to vehicles, excuse me, responding to calls versus what is in the ECC CAD system. And we ran into this in the 2010 report and the 2011 report. And so, what was decided, and what you see in the report, is a statement to that effect, that some of the districts don't agree with this number, but we went with the CAD numbers because it was the most scientific basis that we had, and if it was wrong, it was wrong across the board. That wasn't the way calls are. There are some districts, county, city, that might hear a call and self-respond. So, I don't know why the difference in the calls, but that's one assumption that might be happening. The other disagreement that we had with Matrix as far as their analysis of the data in regards to fire department operations is the way the call process and turnout time was calculated. And so, that was something that we disagreed on, and I'll go into that a little bit more in a few minutes. The third item was the CAD data that the Matrix Group asked for and requested from the ECC wasn't used correctly as far as in the analysis. So, in 2016, as we said, it was a snapshot in time, and when Matrix staff looked at the calls that we responded to, they were looking at the response times. And so, for ambulance, the national standard or benchmark for responding to a call is one minute and four seconds. The performance that they saw was 58 seconds. The 90th percentile average that they saw for county ambulance was 38 seconds. So, there was a variance of six seconds. So, according to the Matrix national benchmark, they were responding within, well within the national objective of response times. For county fire, and this is where we had a disagreement, county fire, the benchmark was, again, one minute and four seconds. Their performance was one minute and 56 seconds, or a 90 percentile average of one minute and eight seconds, leading to variance of 52 seconds. And I'll tell you right now, it's more about the process than it is the performance. So, for example, the standard policy in our county, and Chief White can correct me if I'm wrong, but our policy as far as the fire departments, when they go out on a call, it's not an immediate check back. So, we would have a timed response. Sometimes those engines respond to the call, and as they're going to the call, the ECC will call back and check in with each of those rolling engines. And so, that's when it was timestamped. So, what we couldn't get through to Matrix is its process. The way we timestamp things is not accurate. It's not timestamped at the minute the call goes in, and then the fire departments acknowledge that call. If that were to happen, my assumption is, we would be meeting the national objective, and that's just my assumption. So, I just wanted to put it out there. That's what they found. So, the recommendations as far as how we operate and how we respond to calls, Matrix came up with these recommendations. They wanted to formally adopt benchmark services, level objectives in both communication centers. So, that's both the Emergency Communication Center in San Andreas for fire and the sheriff's office for ambulance. For all call processing time of 64 seconds for 90% of the calls, and to evaluate on an annual basis to see how we're doing. And then, they also want us, as I just mentioned, evaluate the process in the ECC as it relates to callback procedures to ensure the accuracy of en route timestamps for responding to units. So, they heard us as far as what the fire chief told them about the process and how we look at those times, but they didn't correct it in their report. They also went on to recommend that each fire department or district should establish a baseline performance objective of 78 seconds call turnout time for EMS calls and 117 seconds for turnout time related to fire calls. They also said that the fire departments and the districts should formally adopt service level objectives for travel times at baseline standards. So, in talking to the core study team about these objectives and what it would mean to respond faster, or what can we do, some of the county fire agencies have said that they have established those standards for their own individual districts related to the national response averages or objectives, excuse me. But a lot of times, it's down to what we would expect. Staffing and budget constraints have made it difficult to achieve these national response times. Someone today asked me about national response times. They are goals that are out there, but a lot of times, it's urban areas that can meet these. They asked me if there was national response times for rural communities, and we don't really tend to see that. It's just one national objective. So, rural communities do have a harder time meeting those national objectives. Next, we got into training. We really wanted them just to look at, analyze what we were doing for training. Is there any ways we can do some better collaboration? Is there things that we should be looking at as future training? As far as type of training, Matrix did not write much in regards to this subject area. They provided an overview of training requirements and noted that many of the fire districts and departments have positions within their organization for interns. They also talked about the relationship that we have with Columbia College Fire Academy's Basic Firefighter Training Program, and the county and CAL FIRE's participation in that program, and just made their recommendations in this area to just strengthen the relationship with Columbia College and continue working on having internship programs within the various districts or departments. And that was it as far as training. The next area that we asked Matrix to look at is in the area of physical resources. So, in this, we were asking them to look at apparatus space, living quarters, overall conditions of the stations, specific issues with the stations, and then assigned apparatus by unit, year, description, and type. As I mentioned, the first area that we looked at are the fire stations, and of the 18 fire stations in the county, they were rated on a scale of excellent to poor. Their results were, as you see here following. We had one in excellent condition, and that one is the Miwok Band of Indians' new fire station and public safety center that they've just built. The poor one is Jamestown Fire Department. That station is operated, we have an agreement, the county has an agreement with the Jamestown Fire Protection District. As soon as we made that agreement, one of the things that we noticed is the fire apparatus bay didn't have any corrective exhaust system. It wasn't safe for us to have firefighters staying in the building that currently was attached to the apparatus bay, so we moved in a modular unit. Needless to say, that was over 12, 14 years ago. It's still existing. It's a rented building. It's not the best. It needs to be replaced. We need to do something different with that, and that's why I got a poor rating of one. Fire apparatus. In the county, we have the following types of apparatus, everything from type one to squad vehicles. This list does not take into account command vehicles or pickup trucks, but these are the engines that you see on the road responding to calls. The age of their apparatus fleet ranges in age from three to 35. One thing to be note is if the apparatus older than 15 years in the system, if they're properly maintained and still serviceable, we move them to reserve status, just so people know out there. According to the National Protection, Fire Protection Association, NFPA 1901, safety should be the primary concern in regards to decisions made as to apparatus and whether they should still be in service and they should be running for calls. So, taking into that account, that anything over 25 years should be replaced, and the criteria that I just mentioned, Matrix recommended the following replacements. So, this is replacements as of last year. Again, point in time, kind of steady. They are calling for a replacement of two type one fire engines, and again, the cost is somewhere between $500,000 and $650,000 each for those. Seven type two engines in 2018, two type three engines, one type six engine, three water tenders, and then, we have some specialty apparatus out there such as aerial ladders and smaller quick-response vehicles that are still within the 25 limit, and they didn't see a need to replace them. So, on your chart, from what I just read to you, there's a total of 15 vehicles that need to be replaced according to that NFPA 1901 standard, at a cost of somewhere between 5.4 and 7.5. Census report, one of my friends, one of my fire chiefs pointed out to me that there has been in 2015 revisions to NFPA 1901, and if we were to look at that out of the 21, what they called for is anything older than, I believe, 15 years really should be replaced, not 25 years. They've lowered that standard. And if we were to abide by that standard, or is that something we wanted to strive towards? Instead of the 15 countywide, if you just looked at county fire, that would mean out of our 21 engines that just county fire alone has, we would have to replace or need to replace 18 of them. That's how old our fleet is. So, overall, for physical resources, the overall recommendations Matrix made were the following. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, the living quarters in Jamestown should be replaced. They didn't give a cost value for replacing that. It really would depend on what we did, what design there was, and what amenities we wanted for it. They also thought that all the fire stations should have mechanisms to remove exhaust particles from the apparatus bay, and I'm not too sure what that's about. That would be something we would need to ask Matrix. As I mentioned, just if we were to go off the old standards from As I mentioned, just if we were to go off the old standards from NFPA 1901, if we were just looking at 25 years or older, as we said, the cost could be up to 7.5 in replacing countywide the vehicle fleets that need to be off the road. They also recommend that each fire department and fire district should enhance their apparatus replacement program and continue to benchmark and, and measure components of how they're going to look at this long term. Because it's not just right now an issue, but it's going to be, continue to be an issue for them. The next part of the study looked at fire service delivery options. As I mentioned in the beginning, this is the biggest component of what we were really asking Matrix Group to study and, and look at. As you know, the current fire protection system in, in the county consists of a collection of fire districts, community service districts, a city, tribal, and the county, all providing fire prevention services, fire suppression services, excuse me. Each district and their department is responsible for their own financial resources and operations to provide fire service to their respective areas. So again, we just asked them to give us a recommendation as to how we could provide a more effective, efficient, and, and most importantly, financially stable fire service for our county. And so they, the Matrix Group talked to us and they asked the core group, what do you want us to study? And they throw out options for us to say yes or no. And we concurred, the core group did, with Matrix Group that these four options is, is what we wanted them to further investigate. The first one is a modified status quo. The second one is forming a countywide fire department with fire districts. The next is expanding the fire districts. And the next one is expanding fire service with the use of a CAL FIRE contract. And I will go over each one of those in detail. So a modified status quo is basically operating the fire service delivery system the way we are currently right now with some, some modifications, some of the boundaries. So they looked at the north part of the county. They looked at the Ponderosa service area and they also looked at the Columbia Fire Protection District. Their findings were what we already know, what we've just been talking about. The northern region is, is covered by county fire, Twainheart Community Service District and, and Strawberry, two other districts. So Strawberry Fire District and the Miwok Fire District. For county fire, we do struggle and we have for years to maintain volunteers at the Longbourn Fire Station. And that's our furthest, most northern, if you will, fire station that we currently have. Their recommendation under a modified standard, standard, modified status quo model were the followings. And the details for each of these recommendations are in the Matrix report as far as details behind some of their recommendations. So if anyone in the public or the board wants further information about this, it is contained in the Matrix report. So they recommended to not pursue the Longbourn Response Area annexation into the Miwok Sugar Pine Fire Protection District. They just didn't think it, it made sense. They did not think that we should pursue a contract with Twainheart Community Service District to provide services to the north of the current district area. To also not pursue the annexation of the Pinecrest Response Area into the Strawberry Fire Protection District as it would likely create an unstable district due to the lack of funding for our fire apparatus and other capital improvement items. So for example, the Pinecrest permatese are county fire firefighters. And so there was concern that there wasn't enough money associated with that for Strawberry to annex them and to be able for Strawberry really to then carry out the services that were needed in that area. And again, these are not my recommendations. This is coming from the Matrix Group. They did talk about pursuit of formation of a northern, of the northern region to include Miwok Fire, Miwok Sugar Pine Fire Protection District, Strawberry Fire Protection District, the Pinecrest Permatese, again, county, the Longbourn Service Area, and the Twainheart Community Service District to provide fire protection services to the northern region of Tuolumne County. Then, then if we did that, they called for the elimination of CAL FIRE Amador Station at the Twainheart to complete that transition. So they said that. And then the Matrix Group felt that this would stabilize short-term operational needs, but in the long term, they felt that this solution or this proposal wouldn't financially be, it'll be sustainable in the long run. But it was something that was out there that if we wanted to keep the, the same system, but make some tweaks to it in the northern region. Of all the recommendations they made, this is the one that if we wanted to pursue it, that we would pursue it. But they cautioned us about if we went that way. In the Ponderosa area, there are several fire agencies that protect the residents in that area. You have the county fire department, the Tuolumne Fire District, and the Tuolumne Band of Miwok Indians Rancheria Fire Department. The county fire department, again, struggles with maintaining volunteer staff for the Ponderosa Station that we have in this area. And that we do as county fire rely on the other two fire departments to assist in covering that area. So their recommendations for the Ponderosa area are as follows. Do not pursue the annexation of the entire Ponderosa area into the Tuolumne Fire District. But then they went on to say, pursue the annexation of the southern section of the Ponderosa area into the Tuolumne Fire District. And then for the northern part of the Ponderosa area, that we should be contracting with the Tuolumne, the county should be contracting with the Tuolumne Band of Miwok Indians Rancheria Fire Department. So they kind of broke up that area and, to two areas and split it up between the two if we wanted to think about doing anything different in coverage in that area. For the Columbia area, expanding the Columbia Fire Protection District into the county area. So you have Columbia Fire. It's a very small district. And then past that area is county responsibility area. And so they were thinking that, okay, so let's expand county fire protection district. But if we did that, it would only harm and hurt county fire as far as it would be reduced property taxes. But it really wouldn't be any significant gain for Columbia. Unlike, unlike the Ponderosa and Longbourn areas that I just mentioned, Matrix pointed out that volunteer staffing in this area is not an issue. So in the short term, they said, do not pursue an expansion or dissolution of the Columbia Fire Protection District as there is not a benefit to the county. It's such a small district area in, in that. And there's enough volunteers for staffing in that. So those, that was the modified status quo model, if you will. We're going to go on to the next option. Next option was a countywide fire to service, a delivery option for first rescue and first responder services. In that model, they came up with three very distinct options. And they're up here on the screen and I will go into each one in depth. The first one is a standalone county fire department, fire district. Expansion of all the fire districts. A lot of times we'll refer to this as a Califor, excuse me, the Calaveras model. That's what Calaveras County is currently doing. County fire is out of, out of the fire business and the districts, and they expanded the districts several years ago. And the third option is the expansion of the county fire department to be a countywide fire department utilizing an agreement with CAL FIRE to help administer that new countywide fire department. So let's start with the standalone fire department option. With this option, if we were to do it, that would mean that the hiring of all the employees, fire employees would be the responsibility of the county or this new entity. And it also means that you would need all the support personnel that would need to go with it. So you would need to, you know, hire support staff. You would probably need someone in HR. You might need some IT tech, some support in that arena. And you might need one FTU or a partial FTU to help assist with all the, the billing, the grant paperwork, anything else that comes along. This model, for Matrix, again, this is Matrix recommendation, this model would assume a complete separation of, of Tuolumne County from the CAL FIRE agreement except for dispatching in Amador Stations. And in our discussions on the core study team, you need to know that, that CAL FIRE would need to consider that. I don't know if it's an option that if we were to go down this course, they would be willing to continue to provide dispatching services or that they'd be willing to do Amador Stations. I just something if we're going to go down this path, we would need to have further discussions with CAL FIRE. The standalone model calls for seven stations and you can see them up there on the screen. Staff year round. So those are the stations that would be, that would be staffed under this model. It also assumes in the standalone model that the City of Sonora and the Tuolumne Band of Miwok Rancheria Indians Rancheria Fire Department would continue to provide the resources that they do now. There wouldn't be any change to that. We would also need to create a auto aid agreement with CAL FIRE, City of Sonora, and the Tuolumne Band of Miwok Indians Rancheria Fire Department. For standalone fire department, the budget would be 8.9 million. And again, this is fiscal year 18 prices. This would be an increase of, of a little over $967,240 or a 10% increase over currently what is spent on fire service in the county. Not county fire service, but counties, county fire service in the whole. If you took all the district budgets together minus the city and the, the Miwok Band of Indians. The Matrix Group did not recommend the pursuit of a standalone fire department as a service enhancements did not outweigh the significant added cost. One thing that was frustrating to us is the Matrix Group really did not, I think, adequately, adequately, didn't even address what CAL FIRE brings to the table as far as having them in the county and partnering for us as far as the county, partnering with them as far as the additional services. Whether it's having the air attack base here, it's the dispatching services, it's the fire investigation, it's if someone's gone for us as county fire, if, if there's someone that retires or someone is, moves on or something, they have an immediate backup. And so just, I think those were some of the things that as a core study team wasn't included in their, their review. Again, the standalone model, they did not recommend. The second option under a countywide fire department would be the expansion of the districts. Or as I just mentioned, kind of what Calaveras has. With this model, what we would do is that the county would be out of the fire service business and we would use the existing fire revenue that the county gets and we would disperse it to the districts. In the, in this option, what Matrix looked at is again, the City of Sonora and the Tuolumne Band of Miwok Indians Rancheria Fire would remain as status quo as far as the service area that they would be providing. The Don Pedro area would continue to operate as a volunteer organization. The expanded fire district model would have nine stations and you see them on the screen. The districts would look kind of as the following. And they kind of just looked at the district and looked at the calls and looked at the, the topography. And so Matrix came up with one of the districts would be the Miwok Sugar Pine would then be expanded to include the service areas of Longbourn, Pinecrest and Strawberry. The next area would be Jamestown and the Groveland Districts would expand to respond to the areas of Chinese Camp, to the border of Stanislaus County, and cover all of Groveland, including Jamestown. Twainheart Community Service District would be expanded to include Cedar Ridge and Crystal Falls. Tuolumne Fire District would then be expanded to, to take over all of Ponderosa Hills, Mono Village and Mono Vista. And then they didn't, they didn't do anything really with, as I said, Don Pedro was just a volunteer station and then Columbia College, they didn't address and what would, what would transfer there. Right now, as I mentioned, county fire has a contract with Columbia College to provide oversight of that program. Again, the, the county fire money that we have to support fire services would be dispersed to each of these new districts based on projected call volume. And so this chart just shows you how, based on the calls, projected calls in those new district areas, how the money would be allocated. After all of that, the Matrix Group recommended not to pursue this idea of expanding fire districts to provide services countywide as a service levels. They felt would not improve and the cost would remain at current funding levels. Again, it's not sustainable. We'd be just shuffling the deck chairs on the Titanic is basically all you would be doing. I don't think you would, they, they didn't think you would get anything out of it. Again, Matrix recommendations. The fourth audit, the fourth option is a county, county fire department. In this model, they looked at having a county fire department that would serve the whole county with a contract with CAL FIRE. And this option is assumed that the, again, same as all the other options, Tuolumne Band of Miwok Indians Rancheria Fire Department and the City of Sonora, we continue to service the areas that they currently are providing. They also recommend under this option that we can, we, we continue to provide the, the Amador program. As you know, we have three Amador stations in the county. This model will call out for the, for 13 stations, staffed year round. And as you can see on this chart, those are the stations that would be recommended to be operational under this The total daily staffing for this model is 33 personnel, 33 personnel available for immediate response to any incident that occurs in the county. The estimated cost for this expanded CAL FIRE, excuse me, for this county fire department option would be, and again, this is at fiscal year 18 numbers, would be just over 11.2 million. And this is higher than the current cost of operating the, the entire county fire protection service on an annual basis. Again, Matrix recommended not to pursue the idea of expanding the CAL FIRE contract for staffing the county fire department as service enhancements do not outweigh the, the significant added cost. In their key findings and recommendations, the Matrix Group talked about the creation of a countywide fire district as maybe the best option service delivery model and which our, which our community probably should pursue. This would enable the county to determine the appropriate service levels and consider a benefit assessment or some other funding mechanism to provide stable funding for the fire protection and first responder services in the county. What was difficult for the core study group is, that's great, this is, this is the Matrix kind of their, their takeaway, their best option for us as far as a community to provide, again, our goal, efficient, effective, stable funding type of operation. But there weren't really any details in the report in regards to how we get there. The next large subject area is emergency communications. And again, we asked them to look at two specific areas. And again, that was co-location of a dispatching facility and then implementation of emergency medical dispatch, REMD. In their findings, the Matrix Group thought it was a great idea if we could co-locate. It would be a great opportunity to, especially in emergency events, to be able to share information. information in a quick manner among various disciplines. It would provide better understanding among the dispatching agencies as far as what was going on during an emergency event. And they thought it would be a great idea if opportunity arises to pursue and look towards going towards that, that type of merging of dispatching agencies. If co-location occurs and CAL FIRE is not able to be a partner for whatever reason it is, they said that it would be great to consider a virtual consolidation with them. And so, that was that. They also recommended the use of, the implementation of emergency medical dispatching. Well, it's done, the sheriff's office, we weren't waiting for this report to do it. It was just something that we've talked about in this community for a very long time, and something that we really wanted to implement. And so, the sheriff's office was able to do that. And I haven't talked to the sheriff recently, but some of the things I've heard is going quite well, and the community really appreciates it. We've talked a lot about fire. The other component in the study was the EMS system in the county. As you know, the county operates, the only single provider of ambulance services in the county with a longstanding contract, personnel contract with Manteca Ambulance. So, the county provides all of the, you know, provides the facilities and the equipment, well, Manteca comes in with the personnel. This has been a working relationship for a long time, and it's served us quite well. We operate ambulances 24/7. There are five of them out there with a six-unit available 12 hours a day during the week. As mentioned before, snapshot in time in 2016, there were 5,707 calls that were medical emergencies, and non-emergencies were 2,020. The revenues for the EMS services are largely generated from the billing. Groveland, Groveland Big O Flat area is the exception. There is a special assessment in that area to be able to keep an ambulance vehicle up on the hill for their use. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the Matrix group studied their response to emergencies, their vehicle replacement, their stations, and their sustainability. And their only recommendation for EMS services was to continue to the delivery model that they have, and didn't have any other recommendations for them. So that's why you see very little information on EMS services for the county. So, staff conclusions. This was not an easy project. This is a very, very critical issue for our county. This is something that especially, and, you know, for us, the flagship, or what we kept pointing to was the Rim Fire, but after last year, and looking at some of our neighboring counties, and what they went through, and what they lost. You know, as it says here, you know, major fire in Tuolumne County, it's not a matter of if, it's when. Fires are becoming, as we know, more intense and larger. As we've heard recently, and something that I applaud, the county and Craig Pedro really, along with Chief Wyff, really has spearheaded the issue, but we are having homeowners having difficulty retaining or even obtaining insurance. And that's really going to start impacting, it's already starting to impact the real estate world, but it's going to impact us economically. Funding for fire departments and agencies, they just haven't been able to keep pace for a variety of reasons, as we've just been talking about. It is harder and harder to retain volunteers for a variety of reasons, and so, we're relying more and more on paid staff. Countywide, we have an aging fleet, and it's not getting better each and every year. The cost for a fire district, a fire department in the county to save up that much to replace a vehicle, it takes several years to do it if we even able to. The provision of an effective, efficient fire system is the goal that everyone, I think, the core fires team, everyone in this county can agree to. The more challenging task is, how do we get there, and what does it look like? While the Matrix study looked at the required subjects that we outlined in the RFP, the core study team, as I mentioned before, was frustrated at the information that was gathered, the analysis of the information, and then some of the conclusions that were made. I guess to tell you, you know, we asked, the RFP was very lofty, and very detailed, and we did ask a lot. There is no silver bullet out there, and I think it's something that we as a community need to figure out. There were two very important outcomes that came out from the study, and I'm very proud of these two. An independent source, a third party, the Matrix group, after looking at fire service delivery in the county, they determined the status quo of providing fire service for our community is not sustainable. It's not just the county saying it, it's not just a fire district saying it, it's an independent source, looking at our finances, looking at our revenue projections, said that we can't be sustainable. The second outcome is just amazing. Over the two and a half years that I've been privileged of working with the fire chiefs, the level of collaboration, the level of willingness to talk about difficult, very difficult, very personal, very passionate issues regarding of how we're going to provide a sustainable fire service, they were able to better collaborate, and really got at the meat of things. When we first started this study, they were very, they challenged me in regards to, why does the county want to do this fire study, and where do they want to lead it? And my response to us, we don't have a direction we want this to lead, we need to know, we want exactly what's said on the last slide, the most effective, efficient, sustainable fire service in the county, and that's our goal. And from that, I think over the months that we as a core team met, that came through, and really were able to talk a lot about possibilities. Okay, so where do we go from here? First responders, board members, city councils, especially the community, in my opinion, really need to come together and talk, and make some decisions. As we said, we're, as we, the way we're going right now, we're not sustainable. And that's hard to say, but that's the reality. As a staff person, you know, I left the recommendation, my board member, pretty generic, but I think that we're looking at two very distinct areas. One is funding, and that's both a short-term and a long-term need. Right now, as Tracy and Eric are putting together the budget, it's a tough one for us, as you know, as we'll be presenting to you shortly. I'm the budget analyst for county fire, I've been doing their budget for the past 24 years. This is the first year that I wasn't able to get them to be balanced. They are five, a little over 500,000 in the hole. That includes no equipment, no specialized equipment, no vehicles. It means that some of the line items are cut lower than what is acceptable by standards, i.e., for example, would be their clothing line item. So I see a need in, and something that I know Tracy, Eric, and I will, coming back to your board shortly, at the very least for county fire, and it's not just county fire, it's all the fire departments really need some assistance, but I know, at the very least, we want to have some discussions with you in regards to, what does that mean, and what can we do in the short term to shore up the financial stability for county fire? That's short term. In the long term, I really think that someone said, so, you want to do another study? I don't. I think the time for studies are over. I think we need to have the discussions, we need to talk as a community as far as, what do we want to see as fire service? What is that level? And then, what is that, what is that level going to cost us? And then, are we willing to pay for it? And if we're not, then we need to go back to the drawing board and figure out what we want to pay for, and then, what does that look like? So, I know there's several people in the audience, fire chiefs and stuff, that might want to add anything. That's the conclusion of my report. I thank you for your patience, as you have wanted this information sooner than I was able to get it to you. But I think you had somewhat of a better product from us trying to work through some of the very serious and critical issues that resound around fire service delivery. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have any questions of staff from the board right now? Okay.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
On, I have a few, but I'll just keep it to this. On page 83, where one of the options was a TOT tax down the road, or possibly, and one of the questions I had was 25% of that TOT goes to Tuolumne County Visitors Bureau, and this might be for Tracy, but if there was ever an increase in a TOT tax, say we did a 2% increase, would 25% of that 2% increase continue to go to them, or could we earmark that for fire?
That's a, would be determined at the time, I believe.
Well, we have a contract that limits right now the amount that they get. If you were to earmark it, that creates a special tax, which then increases the requirement from majority to two-thirds. So, there's lots to think about.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'm anticipating some significant public comment. So, I'm going to take about a five-minute break, okay? So, we're going to stand recessed for five minutes, I beg your indulgence, and then we will do with the public comment. Thank you. Okay, if we can get everybody back to their places, we'll get going again. I'm still missing one supervisor. I knew, I knew I shouldn't have lost control. Okay, we're going to reconvene the board of supervisors. Can I see a show of hands, how many people want to speak on this item? Only one? Okay, two, okay. Come on. You know I'm going to speak.
Oh, I know.
Go ahead.
Good evening, members of the board. Josh White, unit chief for TCU and county fire chief. I just wanted to make one, I don't know if correction or just clarification, to make sure that the board understands that CAL FIRE is not going anywhere. One of the options given is to form a county-wide fire department that does not involve CAL FIRE, and that would be okay. We understand, from the CAL FIRE perspective, from the county fire perspective, we just want the highest level of service for our constituents, absolutely. But I want to make sure that, and clarify that Columbia air attack base isn't going away. If the county wanted to continue contracting for dispatching services, we would provide that. For Amador services, we could continue to open those dialogues and go down that road. I just wanted to make sure that nobody thought, after that presentation, that, you know, if the county contract went away, that CAL FIRE would move away, and that's not the case.
Thank you, Chief White.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dee Martin with the Strawberry Fire Protection District. I just have a couple of things that I'd like you to keep in mind in going forward. Thank you, Mo, for your presentation, you did a good job. About training, first of all, I think we need to look at volunteers a little bit more. This county used to have a lot of volunteers, as you heard Mo say, and we have hardly any, and the reasons for that are many. Mostly, it's the time commitment. And the recommendation from Matrix was to work more closely with Columbia College. But if you look at our volunteers, these are people with full-time jobs and families, and they don't fit into the college schedule. And so, I think we need to take a look at that and figure out a way to encourage more volunteerism, because we can't afford to staff all of our stations with full-time paid staff. And the other thing is the analysis that the Matrix did, they tried to fit us all into one box, and compare us to urban areas, like Mo said, and that's not this county. This county is very diverse, and the rural situations that we face aren't going to fit into those NFPA standards or other standards that they tried to make us, or tried to compare us to. The other thing, unfortunately, Chief McNeil couldn't be here with us tonight, but he is the chief of not only Twainheart, but Strawberry. And he asked me to remind you all that not all districts are financially strapped. In fact, Strawberry and Twainheart are pretty solid right now. So just kind of keep that in mind going forward, that the reduced revenue referred to in the presentation isn't true for everybody. And lastly, there is a recommendation that was on the board to not pursue the annexation of the Strawberry and Pinecrest areas, and I'd like you to maybe a little more closely at that. And the reason being is that the Matrix, that's a direct reversal of an earlier recommendation that they gave, without changing any of the data. So I'm not sure why they reversed, because their original recommendation was to look at that. And I think that makes a lot of sense for the up-country. So just kind of keep that in mind going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm not surprised, but I was disappointed that the Matrix study group basically overlooked the stations that are staffed only by volunteers. I share my concern there with Strawberry, and Pinecrest, which seemed at one point to be left out altogether, which has had a strong fire company for years and years, based on volunteers. The models that they put together don't address our situation at all. Basically, a fire response, for example, in Cedar Ridge, where I live, from Twainheart, is almost worthless for emergency medical service, and the same goes for a structured fire. It may help contain a vegetation fire. But I worked for years to try to assure that we had a volunteer response in our neighborhood that, at least on occasion, was effective. I've been strongly advocating with some people, a consideration of a consolidation. Under that consolidation, the idea is to basically to wipe the slate clear, make it all one fire department, but within the fire department, create zones, zones of response. And then, within those zones, ask the people in those zones to approve the revenue that it's necessary to support the level of service that they expect in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you. Having lived up here now for about seven years, just have a question, I don't know, is there any taxes, like on the people that come up here, room taxes, but specifically for fire only, say $5 a room, or anything like that? Those are the people that come up here, use our facilities and everything, just a thought, short of a bond issue or assessing each home that lives up here, I was just thinking of a room tax. There's got to be tens of thousands of rooms used every day or every year.
Beyond TOT, I am not aware of one.
That's something I would hope that you might consider, to have no impact on us. If you charge, for example, $5, is that going to stop somebody from the valley or coming up here? It's not, they're going to pay it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Let's see. I'll start. I'll start with Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I agree with everything that members of the public said. I think there was some really good ideas there, volunteers. I can't agree more with the statements that were made in regard to focusing more on upping the participation of the community in their own fire safety in the form of volunteers. I had, I guess it's a question, it just seems like, you know, we've been given these options, either the status quo or countywide fire depart, fire department, expanding the districts or expanding CAL FIRE. And, you know, they've, the analysis shows that, you know, status quo is not sustainable. And then the other three options are too expensive. So, you know, what is, what is the other option there? I mean, it's just what to cut services, you know, eliminate stations. I mean, what's, what's the worst-case scenario if we are not looking at bringing in more revenue?
If we don't bring any revenue in, then what we're looking at is depending on where each district or department is right now, eventually, they will not be, it will be feasible for them to provide fire service. And then they'll be looking at someone to help them out or to partner with somebody or to, for example, come to the county and say, look, we just need to get out of the fire business. We can't, we can't support it anymore.
Yeah. Yeah, and my fear is that this is a decision that's upon us, you know? If we're talking about a half a million dollar deficit this year.
Just for county fire.
Just for county fire. I mean, there's no end in sight yet, so, you know, we really need to. There's not much more time for studies left, I don't think.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Kirk, you got anything?
Sure. I printed this out. I took it home. I read it, because that's my job. And I've been in discussion with fire chiefs in my district the last couple of months. You know, our number-one board priority is fire safe community. And so I took it seriously, and I tried to get ahead of the game a little bit. And I'm pretty vocal about when I, you know, making decisions. The more and more I get into this, the more and more it seems convoluted. So let me just stick with my notes, because I wrote some. From what I've sensed from, from county and from other fire chiefs is this document, if you were to grade it, it would be like a C-minus document. So I'm not too confident with that. I've talked, I've talked to fire chiefs who said that a lot of their input wasn't included in this analysis. And to me, that's an issue, because the fire chiefs and the districts are the experts in this field. We're not. And so we're relying on their information. And if it's not included in this report in a reliable manner, I have an issue with that. Somebody had brought it up today or during this meeting that we didn't, it didn't speak to the benefits or the drawbacks of having a contract with CAL FIRE, so I was looking for that in here, but I didn't find it. So, moving forward. So the problem, as we know, volunteers are down, we got old trucks, we got flat taxes, and costs are at four-point-three annually. We're one-point-five million in the hole. It's going to be up two-point-one by 2023. Ryan Supervisor Campbell listed the four options that we have. Status quo, forming a fire, a countywide fire district, expanding fire districts, or expanding CAL FIRE. Some of the, some of the fixes that we can do for revenue are Prop 147. I saw in this report that three-point-four million of the one, of Prop seventy, I'm sorry, Prop 72, of that three-point-four million, only, I think it's a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand is going to fire. And so I honestly think we need to look at that. I know it means cutting from other areas, and we're not having that conversation now, but I think in the future, we, the short-term future, we should. It's our number-one priority, so we need to act like it is with, with our money. I don't like taxes. I'm against TOT taxes or increases. But all the options, to me, no matter what we do, it looks like we're still going to fall short moving forward. So I think we're going to have to have a conversation real quick about increased revenue through that. Also benefits, benefit assessments, and parcel fees. So let me kind of get to where I'm going, and again, I have notes to keep me on track. But when I look at this report, even though we may not be very excited with the results of it, the one thing that, that I believe they kind of answered, which was a third, which was an outside opinion, what do they think the best model is moving forward? And so their recommendation, whether we all agree with it or not, was to create a countywide fire department. When I've met with the fire chiefs and I've met with locals in the communities, but specifically those responsible for the units, what I sense is, it's like every, every little, every fire department is like their own kingdom. And they're, and they're fighting, and they're scratching for more revenue. They're talking about annexing, but as they annex or as they fight for more revenue, it takes from one pot and just puts it in another. And the sense that I'm getting lines up with what the Matrix recommendation was, which was, we all kind of feel like we're headed towards this one county fire station, but people aren't willing to give up maybe their control to go that route. And I get it, because part of me says local control is the best control, because I think possibly a local fire district can make a dollar go much farther than the county having control of that dollar. But when I have these conversations and I hear that we're all kind of leaning towards that direction, I guess what I'm seeing from the outside looking in and from not being a professional in this field is if that's a sense that we're having, and if that's what the Matrix is saying, then moving forward, I need people to come into a room, take off their hat, take off their badge, and have a conversation and say, what is the best model moving forward? Because as a supervisor and not being in fire, I don't have a problem. If I could just get some solid recommendations, and I think that's what we're all hoping for in this report, if I could get some solid recommendations, I wouldn't be afraid to make it happen. And I'm not getting solid recommendations. What I'm getting is hearsay and kind of reading between the lines that the one county fire department is the way to go. So I need people to step up and be leaders and come to the table, because we're really running out of time. I don't want to be dealing with this in two, three years, going millions of dollars negative, and we can't provide the services we need. Now, moving forward, those services might cost more money. But if the county knows that we did our due diligence, we had that conversation, we've done everything we can at the table to provide that service, then I think the county, I think the constituents would be much more willing to talk about an increase in tax. Something, something that I've also recognized from meeting with different fire chiefs and constituencies, they're also doing their due diligence to make, to make their areas of responsibility work. And some of them don't feel like the county is. And so I want to have that conversation. If there's areas that we need to cut, if there's things that we need to do to do business better, then I would like to know that. I know there's cer, I know there's some stations like Ponderosa and Longbourn that aren't being utilized. You know, there has been discussion about annexing Miwok into Longbourn, which makes sense. It makes sense to put Strawberry Fire combined with Pinecrest permities. But again, if we annex and we do that, we're just taking one pot and giving it to another. And long-term, I don't know if that's going to be sustainable. So I guess where I'm ending it is, the sense that I'm getting from the, from, from the key players is that we're headed towards a one-county solution, fire, fire department. But I don't want to just sense that. I want to have that conversation. If that's the way to go, then we need to get on it. If it's not, if there's other ways to go, then I'm fine with that. But I'm reliant, I don't want the community to look, as board members, we're leaders and we're supposed to set the tone. But this is, this is a completely, I feel like this is completely different ballgame, because there's so many people who are involved in this process, and there's so many key players. And I can't support something, and I can't get behind something, if the very key people who, who are supposed to be doing the same thing aren't doing it. So I hope we have this conversation. I hope we get no more studies. Studies are wasting our time, and we're behind the eight ball. And just like at the county level, where we're restructuring county government, we need, we need to restructure the way we do business with fire. And if that means a CAL FIRE contract, great. If it, if it means, if we do the research and it means no CAL FIRE contract, I'm fine with that, too. We got great CAL FIRE people in here. We got great county fire people in here. And my stance has always been and always will be, whatever's going to provide the best service, the best quality, then that's what we need to go after. And so I'm open to that conversation, and I appreciate people putting politics aside and doing, and doing business and what's better for our constituents. Because at the end of the day, that's what, that's what I want. And I think that's what everybody wants as well. So I think I spoke more than my three minutes, but.
Thank you. Supervisor Gray.
I'll keep it pretty simple. I'll make up for your, going over your three minutes, if that'll work. You know, it's been here a long time, and what we're talking about tonight and the studies is, hasn't changed in the, in the last ten years. You know, we've, we, we have a problem. And if I talk to most fire chiefs and I ask them, what do they need most? They say, equipment and money. That's what they, they tell me, in order to do the job that they're doing right now. So without equipment and money, we get to the, to the situation of not being sustainable. So when we look at a one, Twomey County Fire covering, covering the whole county, we have some real complicated issues there. We have special districts that will, would have to be dissolved, agreed upon. And as I understand it, that's going to take a vote of the people in those districts to give up those responsibilities. So it's not just this Board of Supervisors trying to make that decision to, to make, make, make it better. It's, it's the people of Twomey County. We, we have a really good fire department. It showed, it has shown its muster. You know, we've, we've really done a good job in protecting property and lives with what we have. And I think it's up to the, the public to decide, do they want it to be better? And do they want it, or maintain it to the level it is now? Or do they want it to go, go backwards? And, you know, I'm for doing things better. So I don't see any magic bullet, Mo mentioned that earlier, no magic bullet, to solve this. But it needs a discussion. Supervisor Kirk made the point of, you know, everybody get in the closed room and, and see if we can iron out some of these, these. I was told one time that we have too many fire empires in Twomey County. I don't know, maybe that's, that's the case. But if we can put some of these things aside and do what we're supposed to do is, is take, have the public's best interest at heart and not necessarily our, our empire, then we can, we can come up with, with something that will be better and work. But I don't want anybody to think I'm naive. It's going to cost money. And where that money's going to come from, I don't see it cutting it from the Sheriff's Department or, or the District Attorney's Office or, or those particular departments and come up with enough money to make the difference that we need. So I'll just leave it at that, kind of open end.
Supervisor Brennan.
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything that my colleagues have said. I want to thank the public, though, for coming tonight, and especially for those individuals that made comments. We've been, this study's been two and a half years in the making. I really appreciated the comment from the lady from Strawberry who had a concrete piece on the volunteers. Let's find a time to have classes on a evening or a weekend, something where they can actually attend. And maybe they're doing that, I don't know. But we need to really be looking at what are some of those pieces that, that could make a difference on that part of it, because we know volunteers are always going to be a part of our solution. But when we look at this and we look at the numbers, my colleagues have talked about some of the other numbers. Nobody reminded the seven and a half million just to get equipment to a status quo level on where we should be, whether we're talking about urban response or rural response. We still have to have equipment that can be respond. And even though we are doing a tremendous job in that maintenance effort, the equipment is old. And so Supervisor Gray touched on it. We, we are going to have to look at some funding streams. I, you know, when I read the staff conclusions, and it's like, yeah, the six points, gosh, fires are happening more intensely and largely. It's not if, it's when. These are all things that we absolutely know and we've been talking about. And so what I am hoping is that we need the chiefs to come together. We need the chiefs. They know what the trends are. They know where, where we're headed. And I, I really think it's going to be a mix. And, but we need, we need their experience. We need their expertise. And, and then we're going to have to have some very difficult conversations about funding streams. And I hope the public's listening. I really hope the public is listening.
Okay. So I came onto this board six and a half years ago, and we had just come out of the last fire study, okay? I got to tell you, we're studying this to death. And literally, we're studying it to death. Because in the last six and a half years, seven years, we haven't made one baby step in solving the problem. And it's just gotten worse, because of all, all the equipment has gotten older, okay? The, whatever the, the demographical issue is on volunteers or educational issue has gotten worse. Everything's gotten worse, okay? So we need to get on with it. Before I go really negative, I do want to acknowledge that there were some real positives that came out of this study, okay? First of all, I think everybody in this room that wears a firefighter's uniform recognizes, at least what I'm hearing from our staff, the need to come together and solve this. And I really want to salute those people in, in our fire districts, whether it's county fire, independent fire districts, CAL FIRE, all of that. I really want to salute you for, really for the first time, I think, really coming together and trying to work out something that's workable. We're going to need more of that. The other thing is, I think we have some better understanding of the shortfalls and the trends and the sustainability issues that we've got. Those are the things I'm really happy about. Beyond that, I'm very disappointed in this report, okay? I don't think Matrix did us any favors. I really don't. I'll just leave it at that. Basically, what this study told me was what I knew eight years ago, okay? That wasn't, that wasn't worth the money we spent on this study. I want to put something in a little bit of a different context, okay? How many people in here are happy with our road infrastructure? Raise your hands. Okay? Well, when we start talking about trying to find more funding for fire, we're also trying to find a whole lot more money for roads. And there's a whole bunch of other things out there that we are underfunded on, okay? I don't know what the answer is. I hate taxes. But we have to increase the revenue in this county if we're going to fix this problem, because there is no other place. Maybe nickels and dimes, you know, I'll, I'll have a nice discussion on nickels and dimes. But if you're talking millions of dollars, which is what the price tag is for this, we don't have millions of dollars sitting around looking for a home, okay? So this is going to be a tough, tough road to hoe. What we need to do, first of all, I did commend the, the fire chiefs, okay? They may not be the problem. They may not be the problem, okay? In fact, I think they're probably the solution. It's their boards, okay? It's the independent district boards that if we're not going to be able to come together and work through this, they're going to be the stumbling block. So those of you that are out there listening, that are served by a jurisdictional fire district or community service district board, you need to talk to those folks, too, because the five of us up here have no authority over them, okay? But what I think we need to do, because we've got two problems. One is we've got, in my old business called O and M, operations and maintenance funding, okay? That's what you spend every year to do your job. The other one is hardware, okay? We've got to attack both of those, because it doesn't matter if we've got people paid and trained and all of that stuff if their truck breaks down on the way to the fire, okay? So we've really got two things that we've got to solve. And over top of that is the organizational infrastructure that'll allow us to do it in the most cost-effective way to get the services done. So that's my pitch. Again, I think we need to keep the dialogue open, but I think we need to set some milestones, okay? And I don't think that the, I'll be happy if we can get two, one, two, three fire districts to join county fire, okay? And then maybe we'll get more, and then we'll get more. I don't think we're going to be able to go out in every single one of these fire districts and get their board to approve dissolution, or to get their people to vote for dissolution and integration into county fire. So, and I'm, I'm not for not playing with CAL FIRE. They've done very, very well by us. But we need to figure out how we're going to do that. We need to have that very near-term discussion, okay? And we need the staff and the fire districts to come back to us with what they think is achievable in the near term to get us going down on the path to a long-term solution. That's my belief. And I'll stop there.
Can I agree with you?
Yes. Do we have consensus on the board? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Is that staff direction enough for you?
Okay, so what staff has heard, let me just paraphrase, so I make sure I'm going in the right direction. You would like county administrative staff to continue working with the fire chiefs in regards to, in an immediate, put together an immediate plan in regards to going.
Near term.
Near term, going forward with, starting from scratch, what would a countywide fire department?
How do we start migrating to a countywide fire system, okay? Whatever that means, whatever that makes sense, I don't want to pick any political fights with independent fire districts, okay? But those that are willing to join us in this effort. And then part of that is, I need, we need a really good estimate of what a sustainable budget looks like for that entity, whatever it ends up being in the near term. And then we need to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
Okay. And then also, just to reiterate, Tracy, Eric and I will be coming from your board real soon in regards to some short-term funding operations just for county fire. And again, we will invite every, any district who wants to join in on that discussion to please come.
Remember, in the budget, you're fighting other people that have jobs to do, too. But yes, please do that. Any other comments before we close it out?
I'll just say thank you to Mo. I spoke with many chiefs, and, you know, sometimes I sit here and I think, "That's your job, no offense." But then I hear the chiefs and they say, "How much you poured into this?", and so publicly thank you. And, yeah, let's just, let's get on this. Let's not kick it down the road.
Okay. Anyone else? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and thanks for your interest.